All right, call to order, our council meeting for Monday, June 24th, 7:00 PM. With that, we'll start with the opening prayer from Mark Soretta.
Lord, thank you for bringing us here this evening. Thank you for this wonderful city you bestowed upon us. Help us to guide the city in the right direction. You've given us this great responsibility. Help us to take it very serious and listen to people, listen to great new ideas. And as I've always said, you know, give us the courage to stand up for what is right. And give us the determination to continue on with this whole process of government and to move forward in the way that we need. Also have the compassion, give us the compassion to listen to everybody and understand what they're saying. So, thanks again, help us this evening to do the right thing as we move forward. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask our finance director to call the rule.
Foltz.
Here.
Soretta.
Here.
Revolt.
Here.
Keesley.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Fonte.
Here.
Six present.
Can I have a motion to excuse President Peters?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. I'd like to have a motion to consider the following. Committee of the whole minute meetings of June 3rd, 2019, council meeting minutes of June 10th, 2019, financial report of May, 2019, and liquor license to North Canton Golf, 1500 Rowwood Circle Southwest. Motion to consider.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we'll welcome recognition of visitors. I ask that there's a five-minute time limit, that you uphold that. I also ask you to be professional with your remarks. And knowing that we have a great job done by people here with transcripts, that we don't talk over each other, and there'll be comments to your comments after the meeting. With that, I'll open the floor, whoever wants to address council and administration. Mr. Tripp?
Larry Tripp, 1127 East Maple, North Canton. I really didn't have any intentions of speaking tonight, but one thing kind of been bugging me the past few months. As you will recall, maybe nine, 10 months ago, Mrs. Roel and I, we kind of hit on the same night about piggybacking meetings. You know, council meeting and then a meeting of the whole. And in essence, council was meeting twice a month, for a long period of time. Now, since the first of the year, that's changed, obviously. And I've, you know, I've got to thank, I think, Mr. Revolt for that to some degree, the administration for coming up with a lot of projects for council. So, now we're back to kind of a regular basis, meetings four times a month, which what the charter calls for and our ordinance calls for. But since then, I think one of the aftermaths of the piggyback meetings was, and no disrespect to you, Mr. Soretta, but we no longer have a minister coming to have an opening prayer. Mark, or Mark, I'm sorry, Mr. Soretta?
My name.
You do a commendable job. But, again, it's a tradition, and I'm kind of a traditionalist. And, you know, I asked for four meetings a month, charter. We always used to have a minister. Now, Laura Brown, have you fell down in the job? Has your assistant, Mr. Fox, fell down in the job getting a minister? Has our council president fell down in the job? He's the one that should be responsible for the meetings. So, again, it's not a major thing, but again, it's just an aftermath of what's happened, you know, in the past five and a half years. So, that's one of the things I wanted to talk about. And again, Mr. Mark, Mr. Soretta, you do a real fine job. But, now, the other thing, back in 2016, I brought up at a council meeting, it was in June of 2016, I think I passed that on to you, Mr. Rovetta, and to you, Mr. DeOrio, about a tax rebate for individuals who would paint their houses, put a new roof on, new siding, something of that nature. That was in 2016. Since that period of time, nothing. I gave it to Mr. DeOrio probably in February, and I think I talked to you in February. Since then, nothing for the average man, but we've passed ordinance, out there ordinance on an emergency basis, but what for the common man? Not much. We spent $150,000 to move council chambers to the civic center. Again, for what? I don't know. That money could have been used for tax rebates, very easy. So, you know, again, not major things, but the one thing I'm kind of, that really caught my attention, was the lack of a minister coming to council meetings. So, with that in mind, I think it's something you should take a look at and go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tripp.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council this evening? Mr. Osborne?
Chuck Osborne, 307 Fairview Street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. Several little subjects here. First of all, council's schedule accommodates two vacation periods a year, and yet, I guess that doesn't work for some people. I don't know why Mr. Peters is not here. Mr. Tripp, in response to your recognition that they're now back to four meetings nights a month, you do realize this is election year? That might account for it. I really wonder if everybody in this room really understands why we have public meetings, why we have public speaks. Because it doesn't appear that anybody in City Hall really wants to hear from its citizenry, cares what they have to say. Last week, it was announced there's going to be a grant to Debo. It was also announced that we're going to put it on tonight for an emergency. Yet, we weren't allowed to speak on it last night. If any citizens want to speak on it, we know we're talking five minutes before you pass it on emergency tonight. Let me give you the definition of extort. Obtain something by force, threats, or other unfair means. Because that's what this grant is all about. We've done this repeatedly. I've watched this go on for, since I've been up here for 18, 19 years. Extortion, also called shakedown, outwrestling, or exaction. An offense of obtaining money, property, or services from an individual or institution through coercion. And that's what's going on here with every grant, or tax abatement, or whatever. There's always the lingering implied threat that we'll go somewhere else. Extortion is distinguished from robbery. In robbery, whether armed or not, the offender takes property from the victim by the immediate use of force or fear, that force will be immediately used, as in the classic line, "Your money or your life." Extortion, which is not limited to the taking of property, involves a verbal or written installation of fear that something will happen to the victim if they do not comply with the extortionist's will. Well, everybody has got it ingrained in their head here that, oh my God, they may go somewhere You're promising to give back income taxes that are paid by their very own lowest-paid employee, making 19 bucks an hour or so. To me, there's an implied contract that when an individual pays taxes to the community in which they live, those taxes are going to go to the betterment of the community. You're circumnavigating that implied contract, in my mind. And you're giving them back to their employer, so they can lower their wage cost. This is wrong. Another definition of extort, to obtain from a person by force intimidation or undue or illegal power. This, yeah, it's intimidation. We'll go somewhere else. And they do have undue power. They certainly have financial power. So, as you know, I've been speaking against them here for years. You're creating unfair advantages in our tax system for certain select people. There are many people who have come to this community and didn't ask a cent. CVS, who was at O'Reilly's up north. Sherwin-Williams, there was a proffer to give them an abatement, which quickly died.
Mr. Osborne.
I got it, Mr. Foltz.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I know you don't want to hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council this evening? Okay, thank you, seeing none. We'll get into old business. Do we have a motion second to read by title only, the third reading, and a resolution number four, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
A resolution pursuant to North Canton Codified Ordinance, Section 1181.04, requesting the Planning Commission review, consider, and recommend, or not recommend, council's proposal to amend Section 1179.10, Variances, Subsection C, reviewed by the Board of the City's Codified Ordinances to replace public hearing with adjudication hearing.
Thank you. Councilman Keesley?
I would like to make a motion to amend the third reading of ordinance 1179.10, Section C, reviewed by the Board, which has just been read, to make a technical correction to strike about mid-paragraph conditional use permit and substitute variance.
Okay, so that's a motion on the floor.
I will second that.
Can you second that? Roll call, or do I need a voice vote?
Just voice vote.
Okay. Voice vote, please. Member Fonte?
Yes.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Yes, just all in favor.
Oh, just, you just need to, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
For the amendment.
For the amendment.
Got it. Now, I motion we adopt as amended.
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's all we need on that motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. Motion second to read by title only, the third reading of Resolution Number Five, dash, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
A resolution pursuant to North Canton Codified Ordinance, Section 1181.04, requesting the Planning Commission review, consider, and recommend, or not recommend, council's proposal to amend Section 1177.05, public hearing and notice by Planning Commission of the City's Codified Ordinances to replace public hearing with adjudication hearing.
Okay. Councilman Keesley?
Sort of piggybacks on the one before, same thing, we're sending it over to planning to see if we can get that changed in the ordinance. I motion we adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, do I have a motion second to read by title, the third reading, Resolution Number Six, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A resolution pursuant to North Canton Codified Ordinance, Section 1181.04, requesting the Planning Commission review, consider, and recommend, or not recommend, council's proposal to amend Section 1177.10, action by City Council, to action by City Council for similar use recommendation.
Thank you. Councilman Keesley?
Yes, this is just cleaning up some verbiage, making it clearer for everybody. We're sending it over to planning. I motion we adopt.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, motion second to read by title only, the second reading of Resolution Number Seven, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A resolution pursuant to North Canton Codified Ordinance, Section 1181.04, requesting the Planning Commission review, consider, and recommend, or not recommend, council's proposal to amend Section 1181.08, action by City Council regarding amending zoning ordinances.
Okay. That's what I'm saying.
Again, this is another clarification. We're sending it over to planning to give us the recommendation. I motion we adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, motion and second to read by title only, the second reading of Resolution Number Ten, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A resolution requesting the Planning Commission recommend to City Council amendments to North Canton's Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1133, Single Family and Two-Family Residential District Regulations, Section 1133.08, Accessory Use Regulations, Subsection E, Fences and Walls, and to include language for fence heights and flagpole height placement requirements.
Thank you.
This is something we're sending off to planning to give us the recommendations on changing this verbiage a little bit, making it a little more user-friendly and 2019-friendly. I motion we adopt.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion and second to read by title only, the third reading of ordinance Number Forty-Three, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance amending ordinance Number Fifty, dash, Zero Three, zoning ordinance of the City of North Canton to change certain parcels along Orchard Avenue Northeast, Howard Street Northeast, and Whitworth Street Northeast, as recommended by the Planning Commission to a mixed-use overlay and residential two-family where necessary to provide relief to the residents and businesses therein, and bring the zoning districts map and pertinent parcels in line with the current uses, together with providing opportunities for future residents and businesses, as illustrated below and in the zoning district map attached heretofore and incorporated herein.
Member Keesley?
Yes, this is over by the Hoover District, doing a zone change. We've had our public hearings. I think everybody's excited and we want to get moving on. I motion we adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Give someone else a chance now. Motion second to read by title only, the second reading of ordinance Number Forty-Five, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance amending Chapter 111, council of the codified ordinances of the City of North Canton, specifically, Section 111.01, meetings, time, place, and recording procedure by adding subsection J, as described below.
Councilman Revolt?
Okay. Ordinance Forty-Five and Ordinance Forty-Six reflect some changes in our minutes procedure. As we all recall, our rules of council require minutes from the committees and a favorable committee report to advance legislation. As part of the original minutes document or form, we checked off which members of the administration were present for the discussion. So what we're going to do is, we move in the next ordinance, as we move to using a verbatim transcript as the minutes, we're going to make sure that the members of the administration who are present are duly recorded as part of the proceeding. And so, 445, dash, 2019, just simply says, "All transcribed meetings shall state those city officials in attendance and seated at the dais." So I would move that we adopt the second reading of ordinance Forty-Five, dash, nineteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, motion second to read by title only, the second reading of ordinance Number Forty-Six, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance amending Chapter 111, council of the codified ordinances of the City of North Canton, specifically, Section 111.06, council meeting agenda by amending subsections A and B, as described below.
Okay.
Well, again, this, this particular amendment principally establishes the verbatim transcript as the alternative to committee minutes.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Takes care of old business. Don't do business. Do I have a motion and a second to read by title only, the first reading of Resolution Number Eleven, dash, 2019? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A resolution of submission of question of a renewal of a tax levy for the purpose of providing additional funds for the city's portion of stormwater sewer improvements in the City of North Canton, Stark County, Ohio, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Councilmember Warren?
Laura, I don't know if there's anything else you want to say about this, but this is just the process we go to put a renewal on the ballot. Anything else you want to say about that, when you're doing it with the street and sewer?
No, that sums it up. Thank you.
Okay. And if there is anything else, I move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for Resolution Number Eleven, dash, 2019?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And do I have a motion second to adopt under suspension of the rules for Resolution Number Eleven, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, do I have a motion and second to read by title only, the first reading of Resolution Number Twelve, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
A resolution of submission of question of a renewal of a tax levy for the purpose of providing additional funds for the city's portion of street improvements in the City of North Canton, Stark County, Ohio, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, councilmember Warren?
I just kind of summed it up. Laura, if there's nothing else, I move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for Resolution Number Twelve, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And do I have a motion and second to adopt or suspension of the rules for Resolution Number Twelve, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, do I have a motion second to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance Number Forty-Eight, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
An ordinance amending Section 24, authorized manpower of ordinance Number Ten, dash, Eighty-Nine, police personnel ordinance as amended to allow for additional personnel as needed to fill positions receiving funding from outside sources.
Okay, Jeff's not here, it's his committee, I think we discussed it last week. Any questions about it? Administration, weigh in? Seeing none?
I motion we adopt.
Okay. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, do we have a motion second to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance Number Forty-Nine, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
An ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund, the fire fund, the EMS fund, and from the street fund to the capital reserve fund in a total amount of $335,997.50 for the current expenses during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren?
This is just a way that we're moving to transfer funds, that when Laura came into her position, kind of set up this reserve fund, and it's been working really well. We talked about it last week. There's no other questions. I move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, do I have a motion and second to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance Number Fifty, dash, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of North Canton to enter into an industrial and commercial job creation incentive agreement by and between the city and Debo Nixford Incorporated, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay. Councilmember Keesley?
Yes, this was our exciting news last week. Debo is moving into the old Suarez portion of the Hoover District, and we are giving them a job creation incentive grant over five years. Fifty percent of the income taxes will be given back to Debo. Five percent goes back into our CIC, which we're so excited about. It's essentially the first time we've ever reimbursed our CIC for anything, and forty-five percent will go to the general fund. The agreement contains, within 180 days of the facility's completed renovation, they shall create 215 new full-time jobs in the city with an annual compensation of $8,393,944, and shall maintain that level during a period of disagreement. So that's pretty exciting news. We're thrilled to be offering this incentive to them, to get them into our community. Yes, sometimes, unfortunately, we do have to offer incentives to, you know, we're bidding against other communities. They're moving from North Carolina. I'm sure that's bittersweet for them as well, but it's bringing them closer to their corporate offices, which I think is pretty important when all is said and done. And it's bringing them closer to us, which is very exciting, so.
Yeah, I think it's a poor point. We're bringing new jobs to the region, not just relocating existing jobs in our county. So it's a win for the whole county, especially North Canton. Any other comments, anybody?
It would, it has to be performance-based, so it's not like you're giving them money. If they don't hit their markers along the way, then we have more control over the excess 50 percent. And Patrick, or the mayor, for sure, probably knows about that. He can say something.
Yeah, I wouldn't, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. So, so this really is exciting, because when you look at, like, all the economic indicators, when you have a manufacturing job, that has the greatest economic return to the community. So they say that for every dollar that's spent by a manufacturing company in sales, there's a $1.33 dollar return to the community. Because as they come in, they have to hire people to do the light manufacturing in this case. And then at the same time, those people have to eat. They do grocery shopping, they go to restaurants, they have other services, you know, doctors, and so forth. So it's, it's really going to be a great boost for the area. The other thing is, too, is with that facility, you know, really it was serving as a trucking depot, and, and now, we're going to have people in there, it's going to really revitalize that, and it'll be a new economic anchor for the north part of the Hoover District. When it comes to the income tax, they're estimating 215 workers, an $8.4 million payroll, times the one and a half percent, that's $126,000 in income that the city will collect. And then based on the agreement, we will take 50 percent of that, and after we collect it, we will return it back to the company. If it was higher, then we would accept $130,000, $140,000, but 50 percent would go back. If it was less, we would accept 50 percent of whatever the lesser amount was. And then, uh, as Marcia had mentioned, the good news is that five percent is going to go back to the CIC. So we're looking at, um, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Forty-five percent will come to the city year after year after year after the, um, that period or that agreement is up. And they stay here and they continue to grow. You look at those other companies that are in the Hoover District. Right now, we have over twelve hundred jobs. And we're getting close to what, between four and five hundred thousand dollars in income? Uh, Laura?
Over five hundred.
Over five hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's a lot. That's a lot of, um, uh, it contributes to the base of our city. And the other thing is we are actually economically much stronger now than we've ever been because our tax base is more diverse. So, uh, Darrell, you've been around for a long time. When Hoover was, they were saying it was like upwards of forty percent of our tax base, maybe even fifty percent?
Larger than that.
Yeah. And now, now obviously it's zero, but our, our, you know, top ten, top fifteen employers are, it's much more diverse so that when we lose a company, you know, we're, we're much more stable.
You have a comment?
Yeah, I would just. Two things. Number one is that, uh, this is a great step because it moves this two hundred and ten jobs closer recapturing the magic three thousand that we lost when Hoover folded. So we, we've taken a, a, a large leap in that direction. The second is that what we can't predict are what the expansion opportunities may be at this site.
Right.
I think, uh, you know, I, I would say that, I, I want to say that I think we listened to diverse opinions in this forum. I just happen to disagree with Chuck. This is an extraordinarily competitive environment for jobs, particularly Northeast Ohio. We were very lucky to win this opportunity through some very quick and very skilled negotiation to get this project to us. It could have gone some other place. There are other communities that would or could have won this. The fact of the matter is, and, and I like Chuck and his definitions, uh, he used, what, extortion tonight? And he had one last week, and I'll throw one out there because I think his argument's specious. And I will define it because that's wrong. It means wrong. The fact of the matter is we have used grants as incentives very, very successfully. The state provided a five million job, dollar job-ready site grant that allowed us to grow employment across the street. The city, in effect, when it bought cranes for Myers-controlled product, products, that investment was, was returned within three or four years. Clearly, on the large projects where the wages are higher and the competition is stiffer, we're going to have to be creative in what we do if we want the opportunity. We're not going to win every one of them. But we have to be open. The answer can't be just, no, we don't do that. Because if we do do that, I can assure you that our future will only surround small retail operations. And that will be it.
Right.
The big stuff where you have site selectors who are actively canvassing, and I think that's important to understand, and, and it goes to a lot of what happens here. We had site selectors looking for this company in a wide, in a, a large number of locations. And those site selectors eventually winnow it down. We were fortunate to have won. And I think it goes to many of the things that we're doing here, but the bottom line is.
It does.
We're lucky to have this. We've, we did well on it, and it makes sense. We're into this project for no more than we were for the cranes across the street. And I think that's something to bear in mind.
It's only just the beginning.
And particularly, particularly if we can help this company grow, and it sees value in expanding the employment, which is always a possibility.
I mean, on, on top of that there, and I, I agree, we, we have to be competitive. And I think this is a spark. I mean, we've all know the saying, it only takes a spark to get a fire going, correct? And if we, you look at people that want to come here, and we gotta, you gotta be competitive with that. But at the same, why wouldn't they come here? Where were we now? The seventeenth most desired place? We saw that on Facebook, so that's gotta be true. Right? So we have all these things here. Now, we get more people in here, and that just continues then to roll over and get this fire going. And, uh, and the, the big fire here is across the street, and we're trying to do as much as we can to get that going. So, all good.
Well said.
Before I motion to adopt, I want to say, great job, you guys over there. I mean, it was wonderful. I really appreciate all your hard work and effort and keeping us in the loop and including us in the whole process, and it was a good deal.
I'd like to, I'd like to add for the record, Patrick and the team did a really nice job buttoning this up. This was more than a handshake. There were a series of documents and exchanges that were negotiated and are reflected. Uh, this just didn't fall from the stars. It's the hard work of our team.
I agree, and Pat and administration, thank you for what you did. Uh, pays for us to be creative and proactive for what our future is in the city, and you guys did a great job with that, as well as hopefully the chamber and Stark Development Board and this council who's supporting it. And you did keep us in the loop, and we appreciate that because it is a team effort when we do things in North Canton, so.
One, 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 one final point is, is that, uh, I know it hasn't been discussed, but it's my understanding that this project also will bear, hopefully, the imprint of Jobs Ohio as well. So we've got the city, you've got the Stark Development Board, you've got the State Economic Development Agency supporting this project. I move we adopt the first reading of ordinance fifty dash two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion and second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number fifty dash two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And is there a motion and second to adopt under suspension of the rules for ordinance number fifty dash two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries? Okay.
All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, that concludes, uh, ordinances and resolutions. We'll go to reports. Uh, Rob, our engineer, Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just a couple of quick project news. Tomorrow, our, our East Ferry Waterline project comes to a close. We're putting a final asphalt on it. That's gone on for a number of months, so I'm glad to see that one behind us successfully as well. And we've got a couple more projects slated to start right after the Fourth of July, to the week of July eighth. Uh, Weber reconstruction. We've actually got some equipment out there. Contractor's just waiting, hopefully, to feel a little drier period, but he's ready to go on it. And then also the Watkins-Lorale Waterline. We talked a lot about, uh, Peter himself, that's slated to start at the week of the eighth as well.
Yeah, thank you. I had a question. I know the Main Street Festival's in August, and I heard from somebody, might, we gotta watch the traffic patterns because if Everheart's closed down for an extended period of time, just to make sure the public's notified how to, you know, get to the, the main thoroughfare here in North Canton.
Everheart, we had a little closure this last week.
But isn't there a large one coming up?
It seemed to go real well. And then, yes, the big closure is coming Monday, August fifth.
And that's like.
All fame festivals.
And that's like three months or two months?
That would be sixty days of all goes well. That's the plan, sixty days. And we'll use the same detour route. The town uses, driving half the traffic, uh, to the south on, on Main, South Main Street, then Cleveland Avenue to Thirty-Eight Street. And then the detour north is north on, on South Main to North Main to, uh, uh, Charlotte, where we have a light, and then back to Whipple. Uh, that's, a lot of folks we found with this little mini detour over the weekend were using Glenwood. And that caused, and we anticipated it, a lot of traffic down there. That's not the posted detour route. So hopefully when folks see the, the four-way stop there, Glenwood really backs things up, so follow posted detour.
Okay.
Again, we'll, we'll have to launch that on the Main Street Festival.
Uh, Rob, questions? Because I was, you know, I go Glenwood all the time, so, so I saw how it was the other day, which was pretty, pretty bad. And then when the gas lines there, is there a way, like during the rush time, if it gets bad, let's just say, if, if it's not, that we can get a traffic guy out there and, and, you know, it's that stop sign that does it, and it backs things up. I mean, if we, but if you had a guy that, you know, starts waving through, I saw that as the gas line people were there. They had a lot of people waving through. That thing went pretty good as they were waving through kind of thing. So if it does get bad, is that something that we can look into during, from three-thirty to five-thirty?
We could certainly look at that.
Yeah, it, it was pretty bad at one point there. It was backed up. And when it gets backed up to Whipple, that's the worst thing because then people can't turn into it. So it did get backed up.
And one of the things, and we did it with a little mini closure last week. Our Glenwood Waterline project, we were not working Thursday and Friday. We were in Dominion. And Dominion wanted to, and they were happy with me going to pull it off, but that'd really be a disaster.
Yeah, that would have been.
But, uh, uh, both those projects should be done by August fifth as the plan. That's why we're working kind of concurrently with them. But, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look, and, and again, I urge people to follow the signed detour. A lot of thought went into that to eliminate streets with four-way stops, to use signalized intersections with left-turn arrows. And I think if, if folks, you know, kind of use that rather than sort of making their own detour, it'll go a lot smoother. But we, we'll have to look at that.
Right. For Doug's point though, during Main Street Festival, really got to, you know, that might be where we do need a police officer down. That might be a big issue. Thanks though for all your work on that.
Yeah, appreciate it, Rob. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Mayor?
Yes. Uh, the Civil Service Commission had a meeting, and, um, and whenever we prepare for like upcoming tests, like to replace the, uh, the chief position or the lieutenant's position, we've had a change in the structure over the past few years, um, where we have a chief, then we have a lieutenant, and then we have, uh, five sergeants underneath. Uh, in the event that you have the chief retire at some point in the future, then what we would do is we would have to conduct a test for the chief's position. You have to have at least, you know, more than one person take the test. But then you have to backfill that position after you appoint a, a new chief. So then you're shortly after that having a lieutenant's position uh, or a sergeant's position, depending on who would take the new position as chief. So what, uh, what we had proposed was to combine the chief test with the lieutenant's test so that as people are testing for the chief's position, uh, or for the lieutenant's position, we can pull from the same pool. Because they're both positions of leadership, very similar, uh, in the skill sets. And then what it does is, you know, for example, let's say that you have somebody that tests for the chief position. There's going to be more than one, and in the event that one person is selected, then that person would have to go back again and then take another test for the lieutenant's position. So the good thing is, is, uh, it's just, um, it allows us to streamline the testing process, and it's going to be better for the candidates, uh, whether they're seeking lieutenant opening or a chief opening, where they just have to take one test, which will satisfy an opportunity to serve or be selected in both of those. There's no, uh, there's, there's no announcements or no retirements, but we'd just like to have an active list in the event that that takes place. So a little bit of a change. And then we were also thinking at some point down the road of changing for, uh, the civil service test for fire and police, where we combine those two tests because it's, it's a civil service test rather than having two separate ones. But that wouldn't take place until both tests expire, so we're looking at probably two years down the road. Uh, the next item is the Akron Children's. Uh, we, we had their ribbon cutting, and they had an open house, and the place is just beautiful. I mean, um, it's state-of-the-art. It's, uh, three stories. And they've got, uh, just state-of-the-art equipment, and, and they, they also decorate it in such a way to relieve tension for young children and their families that are going in there. So they have, you know, these ping-pong balls that are bouncing around and these, and these different tracks and, you know, just, it's very colorful, and it's not, um, it's just a very warm and welcoming environment. So it went really well. Had, uh, a lot of the people that are in this room here attended, and anybody that, that was, uh, present, it's, if you have not taken a tour of the facility, uh, I would encourage you to go and take a look at it. It's, it's really a beautiful place. And more importantly is that, um, we have a great service for families so they don't have to travel up to Akron. They can come right here. Akron Children's right here in this area. And it's, it, it's also more jobs, brings new revenue to the city, which is the engine that keeps our police, fire, EMS, and city services going. So a really nice event. And then lastly, yes, uh, the, uh, it wasn't just a Facebook tale. We had the Ohio Chamber of Commerce. What they did is they took all the cities that had enough data to be analyzed. So it was usually cities that were approximately twenty-five thousand in population or larger, which would include, uh, the city of North Canton because we had sufficient data to be considered. So they had two thousand five hundred and nine communities that were ranked. And they were ranked on five factors. Uh, it was employment, housing, quality of life, education, and the overall health of the, um, the residents. And so we were ranked number seventeen out of two thousand five hundred and nine communities. So that just tells you, I mean, it was, it was really a, a nice finish to a, a great couple of weeks. Brought in two hundred and fifteen new jobs. It's a Debo. Uh, we also, uh, opened up the new Center for Akron Children's. And then to be ranked, we're the highest, certainly the highest, uh, you know, one of the highest ranked in the state of Ohio at number seventeen, certainly the highest in, in Stark County, and, um, and we're very proud of it. And not to mention, the state of Ohio is ranked number seven for, uh, GDP gross domestic product.
Domestic product.
Gross domestic product, yes. So, uh, so, you know, we're, we're moving along in the right manner. And, uh, and economically, and, and I would, and I don't have the specific numbers, but I would guess that we are one of the few cities that did not raise the income tax back in the two, two thousand seven, two thousand eight economic downturn. Um, so, uh, so we've learned to work with what we have, and we're, and we're succeeding. So, uh, my praise to the council and, um, and the administration, and more importantly, to the people who live here. And that's all.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, I would just like to thank all the members of council for the opportunity to address a number of your concerns. I do appreciate the emails and phone calls that I get with your particular, specific constituent issues. And we're able to solve them. I think one that, just to share with everybody, because it's, but down, uh, in the area where we took out all the homes for the flooding down along the Zimber and all that, and I know the mayor, you were going to report that we have not had any, uh, complaints regarding any flooding.
Zero.
In the city. But down there, as a result of that, of course, the utility poles were left in place. And I had a report from constituent through Councilman Fonte that, uh, the, you know, some of the wiring that ran to those poles was, you know, left hanging. Posed a concern. Uh, had our appropriate personnel go out there, inspect it, determine first that there were not live wires. Uh, so this mainly re, had to do with, uh, cable wires that were cut and left hanging. So our city crews went through and removed all those wires to take that out of play. And we've talked, uh, with AEP and are coordinating, uh, their removal efforts to get those poles, uh, all removed and, and ISO removed. So appreciate that. Had a couple of nuisance complaints with some dead trees. There, we do have ordinance on the books that if there are dead trees in your, in your property, you have an obligation to remove them under the code. We, uh, spoke with a couple of owners on that, and, uh, we got those, those dealt with. So, uh, don't, you know, be shy. Make sure you just send me your requests and I'll get to them. And Tim helped out on, uh, one, uh, with me that I couldn't get to, so. Between somebody there, we're, we're getting to them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Pat, it's right there.
No report.
Well, Director?
Yes, uh, just to follow up and thank the good folks at, uh, Debo next door. And the, the allegation that there was extortion in, involved with this actually is, it's quite the opposite of what occurred. That once we were informed that there was an interest of moving some positions to the city of North Canton from, uh, that, uh, well-known, well-respected corporation that, uh, those involved, uh, pulled out all of the stops. I think, uh, it's fair to say that in a polite and kind but relentless way, we, uh, pursued this, uh, opportunity. So for all of those, uh, that were involved, this began with a relationship with parties that knew how the city did business and its, its history and, uh, its ability to continue to grow despite having one of the lowest tax rates for income tax in the state. And, and so, uh, it, it's terrific to see this, uh, come to a culmination with this vote. The addition of utilizing the Community Improvement Corporation to, uh, help, uh, seal this deal. The, the, the allegation that, uh, uh, they extorted us is, as I said, is just quite the opposite. We did everything we. We did everything we could to show that we were welcoming, but still, uh, you know, cognizant of we were not going to give everything away to get this proposal. It's a very, um, I, I think diminutive, uh, type of grant. They, they absolutely could've asked other communities for significantly more and taken it, but they wanted to be here in North Canton. So that speaks volumes for this council and administration.
Thank you. Thank you, Flod Director. Member Serena?
A couple of things. Uh, over the last several months, we've talked a lot about permits and some dissatisfaction with contractors and so on. So, um, I would say about a month ago, we got together with a group of contractors, um, that have been pretty active in our community. Dom, Darryl, myself, Pat, uh, met with them, one from a concrete side, one from a building side, one from a supplier side. And, uh, we listened to their issues that they may have and, and their concerns. It was very cordial and very productive. And then, uh, Pat, of course, was, was late to, to do the, the legwork a lot of this. And today we met with the concrete side, but we made some really good progress with getting our permits in line with everybody else. And I think that the, the concrete people were very happy with it. We had Marty, our, our, uh, inspector, uh, or your chief inspector, if you wanna call it that. He has, was involved in it also and made some good changes. And I think we can all say it was very positive. It was the, the way it should be done, listening and then going back and, and seeing what we can do and then getting back to them about their, uh, their approval and buy-in and then moving forward. So we'll probably see some of that moving forward. And I can't say enough of how we, that was taken care of, so thank you with all that. Secondly, along with that, and, and Pat will probably, I missed that, but next week we're gonna talk about a sidewalk project. We've all been talking about sidewalks. And, uh, Ben, who is our, uh, intern here, uh, was put to the test here and, and really came out on top of putting together a program, looking at other, uh, people that would do with sidewalks and, and how, you know, we can pay and, and have, uh, people pay half, we pay half type of thing. But it's a whole, it's a whole program of that. He will be introducing that next Monday, I believe it is, July first. I reviewed it and everything because I've been really vocal about the sidewalk, just like everyone else. And, uh, I think this is a great start to, to where we're headed with this. These are, this is for sidewalks that need repair. Okay, the new sidewalk stuff's gonna come back to us and we're gonna have to look at where we're gonna move with that. But I think it's a good start, so we'll look forward to seeing that and having Ben stand up and, and do his thing here. He does it very well. And that's all I have.
Thanks.
Very good. We're gonna be under the spotlight, Matt.
Patrick and I have met with the realtors not once but twice on our rental registration. We have some documents for review. We have some drafts that are, are being cleaned up. I expect that we should have some things soon after our fall break. Is that be correct, Pat? I think we've got a little bit of work to do yet. But, uh, so there's some behind the scenes activity. And I think we're gonna have a reasonably decent product as a starting point.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Good conversation.
No report.
Number?
I just wanna thank Jessica for the article on pickleball. That was fun. It's just nice when you can have those nice community articles where you see so many people that are participating and, um, there's something new that we're doing, so thank you for that. Rob, thanks for all the communication with all the roads and Everhard and the signs went up way beforehand and, um, I mean, it's gonna get really busy after August. And, uh, that's just so important because then they don't like it, but it just makes it a little bit easier knowing that they know how to plan. So thanks for all of that. Um, that's great. Working with the construction and the trades because we've heard this again and again and again. So that's a great step mark, um, taking the lead in that. I know we both have heard many complaints this past year especially. And I think with Marty coming on, um, it's just, we have a really good opportunity to make things very even and make it so that people wanna come into our, um, community. In regards to the prayer, um, I appreciate longstanding traditions as well. However, um, honestly, I would rather have, I don't even know who's supposed to get, the person that does the prayer. But if you look at Alliance, um, and I think they have seven council people, I'm not sure. It's a rotating whoever wants to do it says it and they're able to say however they speak. And same with Canton City. Um, I don't know if I wanna spend any more time looking at how other communities do it, but, um, Mark, you have done a nice job. And honestly, I would rather have whoever's supposed to be doing it maybe focusing on other things and maybe it's time that we look at that differently and say, we are doing it okay the way it is. As far as vacation, you know, I guess maybe there isn't anything else to talk about and so we wanted to say something about people's vacation. This is a second job. We've looked through the charter. It doesn't say how many times you have to be at meetings per month. Jeff does a, a great job, as I think all of us do. And Chuck, you have numerous times looked at how many times people have been absent and not. And this council, compared to many other councils, does a really good job with that. And whether they're on vacation or at a, um, meeting for work, we all do that on a regular basis with all of our jobs. So I don't want Jeff thrown under the bus or anyone that's not here. Same with Laura and the other assistant as far as looking up who's supposed to call. We don't need to throw anybody under the bus when you come up here. Thanks, Pat, for also, um, looking at the trees. I had a really nice note from, um, a woman who wanted a dead tree down and the response was just wonderful, so thank you. You're really good about calling us back and communicating that with each of us individually and then working with the constituents and letting us follow up with them in different ways. So thank you for doing that. And, um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick comment on the prayers then. Because I'd rather have someone here too, but really does it matter who says it? It's all about.
No.
Saying.
Right.
And putting it up, so.
Well, and it's hard to get people, I mean, it's hard for them to come. It takes time, maybe from them actually going out in the community and servicing.
Some of them really like coming too.
But they try.
Yeah, they just need to be asked.
But in majority, it's not happening in other places, so I don't think it's something we need to criticize. We're, we're getting it done and, um, it's not something that does less.
Well said. Thank you.
Go ahead. Prayer.
Prayer.
You know, Doug, you and I know this body's been prayed over for a long, long, long time. And I would just simply say, I, I would agree. I think it's more important that we have a prayer delivered, uh, than by who delivers it.
Right.
And I say, it, you know, I, I would just also note too that, you know, if we make a big, big deal out of this, it will attract the kind of attention we really don't want. And then someone will materialize, demand that we stop the process.
Right.
And that's a real risk. I mean, we have seen already our Christmas tree lighting renamed. And I, I think we wanna be open to all faiths, obviously. But it's a practice, I think, that, that has served us well over the years.
But I think there's also a time where when it went from Christmas to holiday, that's what people are doing this today, so I'm okay with that, but.
My, my, my point is, my point is that we see a fair amount of communication from external bodies regarding religious activities within legislative entities. I don't think we really wanna have a problem. So let's just kind of keep our heads down, pray, literally.
As we've been doing.
Just do it.
Thank you. Councilman Fonte?
So, um, I was at the open house Saturday with the mayor and it was first class. I mean, it was well done. It was packed. Uh, they said that there's people actually knocking on the doors before they even opened to try to come in as patients. And they have a huge amount of following. I guess there was a huge demand in this area, you know, to be able to walk to Akron Children's.
Yeah.
So it's really a, a neat, uh, facility and of course a good, uh, to the job plus column. And of course, the new jobs with, uh, last week's announcement, the two hundred and fifteen jobs was great. Um, I wanted to also say thanks, Patrick, for getting the flags up. It looks great. I had many people comment to me about it. Um, they just asked me to, to get a little bit more money so I can finish it all the way down to Everhard. So I might have one more donation coming. Pavs, you know.
Looks so nice.
Do, do you guys see that?
Looks so nice.
I mean, is that what you wanna see down in town?
Yes, so nice.
I mean, so pavs. So, so we've, we've only just begun really when you think about what's gonna happen in the main corridor. This is what we've been missing for years upon years upon years. And the reality is now, when you drive down the road and you see the people interacting, the families, the, you know, the kids after ball practice, whatever it may be. You know, I wanna see a lot more of that happening in our corridor. And I'm really excited about Timken's, or I mean Hoover's because those hundred and forty apartments, there's a lot of people that wanna move into that place. They just gave it up because they don't believe it will ever happen. I feel confident it's gonna happen. And I feel confident that this corridor is coming back. So as, as we continue working on the DRD and hopefully the entertainment and other things, I think we're gonna all be pretty excited about what happens to our community. So I'm really thrilled to be part of it. So I say thank you.
You know, one other thing, um, I wanted to say thanks, thank you Akron Children's. They've been great about communicating and inviting us to things. I was just at, they had a conference last year for, or last week. Did anyone else go? Hey, we were all invited, but, um, it was for youth advocacy and they had Sanjay Gupta, who's the National CNN correspondent there. And then in the after, um, actually the governor came up and then they had a panel and then they had, um, J.D. Vance, who wrote Hillbilly Elegy, if anybody read that. And so to have two national speakers, um, was pretty, pretty, a pretty big deal. And they invited all of us to come and, um, it was just a neat opportunity to go up there. And, you know, there's another thing up here for, um, Bill Constantine. It just is nice to be included in that and for them to say we're part of their community. So, thank you.
Alright, final call for new business? Seen none. Uh, we do have a committee meeting next week and special council meeting, that'll be Monday, July first, so remember that. See everybody here next Monday. With that, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?